Mayor's Town Hall Meeting here at Hasselbring Center. We're delighted to have our mayor present tonight. We want to begin this experience with a word of prayer. If you would please, if you could just sit and value it to be fine. Almighty and eternal Spirit, we pause to give you thanks and praise because we believe in God and we believe in God because you are God. And you have shown us so many times that there's nothing like you. We thank you for life and for living. We thank you for this moment in time. We thank you for this time in history that we are embarking on. We ask you now, as we come together as a community, that you would bind us closer together. And as we confess that we hadn't always done right, thank you that your word teaches us that you will forgive us when we do wrong. And so, since your word says that and we believe it, that we confess our sins, that you are a just God, that you will cleanse us from all unrighteousness. And that we are so attuned to the word to teach us, that if my people were called by my name, would humble themselves with prayer, seek my face, that you promised that you would hear from heaven and heal the land. We confess that Flint needs healing today. We ask that you please have mercy upon us. As our mayor comes coming going days ahead along with our administrator, we ask you to give them a spirit of cooperation. They might work together for the good of our community. Lord, we just need you right now because of all of the violence and all of the things that go on. But yet, we believe that by your power, by your grace, that we can do anything, even turn this city around. But with us stand by us, in the matchless name we pray. This time, the First Ward City Councilman, Mr. Eric Mays, will come with you. You're welcome.
Good evening. This shouldn't take me about a half an hour to do this welcome. I would first like to welcome and thank Mayor Weaver for agreeing to come in the First Ward first. I would like to welcome Ms. Henderson for agreeing to come as well because, you know, I stopped her uninvited because I knew she'd bring police and I don't trust police. Captain Gold, she's over at the... I'll pass it to y'all, girl. I thank you and you'll hear more from him. But everybody that's in the First Ward, can you stand up for me? Who's number one now? Visiting State. I call the Glock Club leaders in the First Ward. We got a good group of Glock Club leaders, presidents and whatever. But this is open to each and everybody and we hope that you feel welcome and at home in the First Ward. This is something that I asked Mayor Weaver, could we do? And I was just kidding. It won't take me a half hour to say welcome. But I'm glad you're here and this is gonna be her day. And we'll be standing by to support and help her as we venture and go down this road. Can I tell y'all why we were a couple minutes late? We was waiting on my mother and when she came in and I walked her, we got ready to get going. So I did that on purpose. God bless you, welcome and enjoy.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. This time, we would like to recognize our elected officials. Like for all the elected officials, please stand. Any elected officials? Okay. All right. We have two, is that right? All right. We have Mr. Mays and we have our highness, the new mayor, Dr. Karen Weaver. Now, at this time, there's a membership information coming from the director of Hasselbring. You come forward now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to Hasselbring Senior Center. I would like to welcome you, myself and my board. Can I please have the Hasselbring Advisory Board, please stand? I have the president here, Jackie Dillon. Vice Chair Percy Knapp. Treasurer Ms. Norma Allen. Ms. Blackingame, Shirley Blackingame. Secretary, and Assistant Secretary, Ms. Bonnie Grass. We do have a membership form floating around, so if you guys do not have a scan card, this is what a scan card looks. If you do have one, please scan in on your way out under Town Hall Meeting. If you do not have one, fill out the form. We will mail you a card so you're able to participate in any Genesee County Senior Center. Please go to all, not just one, and participate in all our activities that we have going on day to day. Councilman Mays, he got me. He said that's how we get our funding, which I was gonna say that. But thank you for reminding me. That's how we receive our senior village funding, is by the participants coming in and being active in our day to day activities. And I do apologize, I would like to congratulate you. Thank you so much for running. I appreciate that personally. Congratulations once again and welcome. And thank you for having our first town hall meeting here at our center. Congrats. Thank you, guys. Enjoy. We do have light refreshments over there and please make sure that you stop by one of the 15 Genesee County Senior Centers.
We're about to get to the part that everybody's here for. And that is to hear our mayor. As she prepares herself to come, I look over this audience and it is a thoroughly intelligent audience. If I was in church, somebody would say amen. This one's like a terrific, intelligent supporter, city of Flint crowd to me. And we have not invited the mayor over here to embarrass her or to do anything that would be less than loving towards her. She is our mayor. She, you may not have motive for her, but that's over now. She is the mayor. So we only ask that you respect the mayor as the mayor. And we have a time scheduled from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. We start a little after 5:00, but they only pay me till 7:00. But at this time, I'd like to welcome the mayor of the city of Flint and ask you to greet her likewise, Dr. Karen W. Weaver.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Pastor. First, let me just say thank you all for showing up. I'm so happy to have this many people come to the first town hall meeting. And when Councilman Mays asked me what I could consider having it here in the First Ward, I didn't have to think about that twice. That was yes, let's get started. So he made the arrangements for us to be here. So thank you, Councilman Mays. I appreciate that. I really do. And I know this was one of the pledges that I made when I was campaigning, that I said I was going to have a monthly town hall meeting. So I'm glad to see so many people here from the First Ward and I'm glad to see other people here as well because they're all going to be about what's going on in the city of Flint. And I kinda wanted to, well, first, let me say this. I'm doing this because, you know, I've told some people when I came in, they said, you know, thank you for doing this. And I told them, I may not have all of the answers to your questions tonight. And if I don't, I'll be doing my best to direct you to where you need to go to get the information. And we'll be working together to get you the information if we don't have it here for you tonight. So I just wanted to start by saying that. We also have water filters for Flint residents that are back there. We decided at the last minute, let's bring some water filters here as well. So you can get those. But the way we were gonna do this is, I don't know if people got agendas or not, but we were gonna talk about water. And really, I just wanted to give some updates. And then if we had questions about water, let's ask them then before we move on to the next topic. So that way, we can get all of our water questions answered and then we'll move on to public safety and we'll do the same thing. And I know we'll have people can either stand up and ask questions or that we have index cards if people want to write them down. So that's what we're going to be doing. And the other thing I said was, I wanted to thank everybody for coming because I told you guys, don't get me here and leave me, that I wanted to be in continuous conversation and dialogue with everybody because that's the only way we're gonna move Flint forward. And even with the prayer that you did as far as us working together to make things happen, that's just what we're, that's what we wanna do. We wanna work together. We wanna make things better for the city of Flint. So just have a little patience, but we're trying to go in the direction that I talked about. So thank you for that. Since we're talking about water filters and we have some, I don't know, I guess we have, okay, yeah, we still have some left back there. But I do want people to know that we're gonna continue to have those. And we will have them at City Hall and we'll also have them at G Card. But one of the things that we're going to be doing differently that's in place this time, I think because we didn't have it before, is when you pick up the filter, you'll also be able to get your refill when you pick up the filter. So it cuts down on you having to come back and forth, you know, in three months or however much water you use that you gotta come and get another filter. And we didn't have those, I mean, the refills in place before. So now, we do, we are doing that. So you can come and get it all at the same time. And I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we'll have the pitchers as well for people. Yeah. So we'll have, because some people have talked about the filters not fitting on their faucets. So we're gonna have the water pitchers available for people as well. And that would be at City Hall and at G Card. So that was one of the first things I did, wanna let people know about that. We also have, there's a fund that's available and it's called Keep the Water Flowing Fund. And that's, I think that's something that can be utilized one time a year. And it's if you have, what, a shut off notice or what is it? For the shut off notice. And the way you access that is the 211 hotline. And they'll walk through with you the information that you need to have to be able to access those funds. And you know what? I also wanna let people know about that because if you're in a position to be able to contribute to that, we want people to contribute to that 211. And I believe that's the united way that we're doing that. So I don't know how many people know that that's available to utilize or to contribute to. Because while we can stand here and fuss about the situation, we still have to try to put some provisions in place to help each other out. So we do have that 21, that, I was gonna say that 211 hotline where you can find out about accessing those funds and contributing to keep the water flowing. That's what it is. So I wanted people to know about that. Something else, as far as the water goes, I know I've heard people say that they really weren't kept abreast of what was going on with KWA. That's been a real big thing, this KWA pipeline. And so maybe you saw in the paper that some appointments were made to the KWA pipeline. We, we had three appointments. State Representative Neely is still on that board. Councilman Mays, I guess he's walking around someplace. He was appointed to the board. And Dr. Laura Sullivan, she's one of the engineers at Kettering that had been really involved in the water issue. One of the, I mean, she's an engineer, but she was one of the grassroots people that was helping. And so those were the appointments that have been made to the KWA. And I believe that those are people that are going to really look out for Flint and speak up and let us know what's going on. You know, it was interesting when we went to that meeting, I had, I see some of the people that were, that are sitting here that came to that meeting. And a lot of people said they didn't even know that they could come to that. And so, you know, I was really happy when I went to that board meeting to see, you know, Flint residents out there because we've got such invested interest in that KWA pipeline because between Flint and the county, we're the ones that are gonna be utilizing it. So you need to know what's going on. And I'm sure that Councilman Mays and Dr. Laura Sullivan will be really good additions to that KWA pipeline. And they'll, they'll let everybody know what we're doing and how things are moving there. So I wanted to tell you that. If we look at, I know one of the things that I've always been talking about is we need to get some more money. We need some funding because we know that Flint can't do this all by ourselves. And we didn't get in this situation by ourselves. And so one of the things we have been working on, we've been going to meetings and working with people at the state level and federal because we need to get some funds and we do recognize that. And so that's the other thing we're doing, is trying to put some things in place. They told us, here are the things you all need to do. Here are the steps you all need to take and the information and documentation that you have to show us to be able to qualify for some of this funding. So that's what we're working on right now. And hopefully, we'll have some more updates for you about that. So it hasn't stopped, but some things take a little bit longer than other things. But it doesn't mean that we're not there, meeting and working on trying to make these things happen. So that's what has been going on with the water. In fact, you know what? I can give another little update because we were in a meeting, I think it was, was it last week, Natasha? We were in a meeting and...
Okay.
Every Friday. Yeah, okay. And we were talking about the schools because people were concerned about the schools and what was going on with that. And I guess the good news that they had to share was it was related to the fixtures that are in the schools. And so they're meeting about that. I know last week, they had completed testing eight of the schools and so far, all of it was related to the fixtures. So that's a good thing because those can be taken care of. And I think when they complete all of the testing, they'll look at the cost and see because we would like to stay to help with that cost for the fixtures for the schools. So that's what we're working on as well. And I know they'll be letting the superintendent know the total number. But that's where they are as far as all of the schools. And we started with the elementary schools first and then working our way up. And I think after the public schools, the community schools are done being tested, then they'll start moving out to the charter schools. So that's the plan for that. So as soon as we get more information, I'm sure, if we're not telling you, the superintendent will be letting you know, but you should be hearing about that as well. So that was the other thing I wanted to tell you about that. We're also looking at some programs and funds and looking at the CBGD dollars as far as the lead lines as a way to start taking care of those lead lines that are going to the homes. So we've been working on some things as far as the water goes. So I wanted to share that information with you and then see if you have any questions around the water. How much time do we have to take questions around that issue before we have to go to the next one? I'm not sure.
Well, Latoya, we got as much time as you need. So that's on you.
Okay. So in case we don't get to no, we're gonna get to number two because I have a police officer here. We are gonna get to public safety as well because we've got some good information that we need to share with you all about that. But I didn't know if, yes, ma'am?
I have just one question. Thank you. My question is, and maybe Mrs. Henderson can answer this. Has the MDEQ corrected their testing? Or are we actually affiliated yet with the universities coming in? I know that was talk at city council.
As far as the testing, as far as with U of M, we are continuing to try to...
Speak into the mic.
Oh, we're continuing to try to have a relationship with them to GIS MAP where we have our lead piping. And also, the mayor and I are working on outside third party testing as well in addition to. And this is outside of what we have to do as far as compliance with DEQ. And that is something that the mayor will be announcing very soon. And I think everyone will be very, very pleased with the proactive mindset that the mayor has with moving forward with this.
Okay, thank you.
And you know what? That was a good point that you brought up because we are looking, because we know that people have been skeptical about some of the testing. And so we are looking for outside. We want to get an independent test source to help us with that. And so we want to relieve the, you know, make people comfortable with what we're doing.
Mayor Weaver, I'm right here.
Okay. I'm sorry.
We went out this weekend, Shane and I, and tested water with Wayne State. A lot of people still using this water because they can't afford to get bottled water. We need a state of emergency call so that they can bring in National Guards and set up checkpoints because of the fact, a lot of people can't carry two cases of water on a bus. They don't have transportation. The kids still using water for roaming noodles. I don't wanna get out there and start protesting or anything like that because of the fact they would take it the wrong way. But at the same time, people have gotten complacent because you won and they changed to Genesee County water.
And people need to know it's not ready yet.
Right.
And that's why we wanted to bring filters here with us. And that's why I wanted to start off by talking about the filters because it's not time yet. And when it is, you know, we wanna make sure that the water is safe. We wanna make sure we test it and we'll let you know. You know, it was funny because we were talking in a meeting the other day and we were saying how we wanted to move quickly and make sure it was safe. And I said, no, we're gonna make sure it's safe and try to move quickly in that order. But the other thing, you know, you brought up a good point because people can't carry bottles of water. And we even talked about some people can't put the filters on their faucets. And that might be something, I'm sorry.
What about the people that are homebound?
Right. That was the other one, people that are homebound. So one of the things I was talking about, we were looking at what the schools have to offer and how we can do partnerships. And right now, I'm talking about the colleges and the universities because we were saying that would be a good partnership as far as having some of the students, if we know somebody needs help getting that on, have them come and help. If we know they are homebound, take that to them. And that's one of the things that they were talking about, working with us to make happen.
So the follow-up question that I have for that, right? Just because one person told me that it's hard for Flint residents to call in because they don't trust the city of Flint and MDEQ testing. But we had 150 people call in just in the last of the week to get tested because they trusted Wayne State. Is there any way that you or Ms. Henderson can fund the money to like a Wayne State University or someone like that and then use the people or residents that's been fighting here in the city of Flint, that the people have seen fighting for them, that they trust, so that we can go in the house and get the water samples so that we can really, you know, get down to nitty gritty and find out whose water is truly messed up so that we can fix it?
And you know, what I was gonna say is I can't tell you yes or no right tonight, but that is something that we're looking at. And we should have some more information for you about that next week because we do understand people don't trust and people don't believe. We know that. And really, that's part of the reason that I'm doing these kinds of town hall meetings so we can keep you informed about what we're doing. And that's why I wanted to start by saying I may not have all of the answers, but we'll try to get it to you in a timely fashion. And we want it to be accurate. But that's something that we can sit down and look at and we'll have some more information for you next week.
Right here, Mayor.
Yes, my name is John Billy Van. My question is... My question is this far as...
What the heck?
Mic's too hard.
Oh, wow.
My question is this far as the water. Also toured the Flint city plant and saw the visual when they turned that on. But my thing is, I believe that plumbing coming from the street to your house is also infected with lead. So are you guys gonna do, redo the plumbing for our houses or just give us a band-aid?
No, that was one of the things I was talking about, using, being able to use some funds to get those lead lines that are for the houses. That's what we're looking at doing because we have to.
Okay.
My name's Keith Pemberton. And as of, excuse me, as of a month ago, we now have five kids that go to Freeman Elementary. Freeman Elementary isn't this ward, and I apologize because it's not this ward, but it's still stressing because the kids in Freeman have the highest lead test of anybody else in the city. And now that we have five grandkids going there, the problem is that they're being allowed periodically at times to drink from the water fountains there, still, still. And the school is not preventing that from happening. Now, DEQ got us here and I'm meaning absolutely no disrespect to you at all, but we watched on TV when they did the test on the water in Freeman School. They used the wrong bottles. They used the wrong testing method according to EPA. And yet, we are still going to use their word on what's wrong. We need outside people to come in and test because we can't trust the DEQ. And it's not something that can be talked about or talked away in a month or two. This is a serious issue. And I know you're working on it and I applaud you for that, but the school issue with the water, you're not gonna wipe this one under the carpet. We would appreciate it if you would follow up on that.
Well, let me say this. I know we did talk about they were changing the way the water was going to be tested and getting rid of that pre-flushing piece of it. We did talk about that last week and that's in place. Now, I can say something to the superintendent, but you know, they're their own, they're separate from us.
But they're our kids.
But they're, right. That's why I said I can say something to them about, you know, what's being, you know, what's being reported. I don't have any kind of jurisdiction over what the schools do, but I would think they'd wanna know that. I would think they'd be concerned. So we can bring that up and I will do that. I can do that.
I hear them. We're coming up front. Please.
I was wondering if there are ways that we can nudge the county health department, nudge the county health department to start testing our children, not with the fingerprint, but to do the drug, blood draw because that's gonna give us a better result and a better read for them.
Well, you know what? That's gonna give us a good read initially, but after 30 days, it's not going to. And so one of the things that's going to be important is when you go to your pediatrician or if you go to a mental health provider, you're gonna have to get developmental assessment. You're gonna have to get a screening because it's not going to show up that way after 30 days. And so you're going to have to look and see if they're behind. And so there's some developmental screenings that can be done when you take your child to the pediatrician. You need to request those kinds of things because that's how you're gonna be able to detect some of it. It's not going to be through blood. That's, like I said, the first 30 days, I believe, is when it's still in the blood. But after that, we're gonna have to do different kinds of testing because that won't pick it up. Blood test won't pick it up after that. So, that's why I want people to know that they do need to talk to their pediatrician and get those kinds of screenings done. And they can talk to, if there's a school social worker. But they need to press it that way as well because we're going to have to look for a lot of different kinds of things if they're falling behind, if they're not doing what they should be doing. If they're not reaching certain milestones at certain ages. So, those would be developmental assessments and screenings that you need to press for as well.
Okay.
Okay, this is Nancy Berger. We came to you before you were voted in. We came to you after you were elected. We are all from, me and Georgia, both from Ambassador East. We stand with Ambassador East. We wanted to let you know that the damage claims were denied. They are still being denied. Now, Peter Bade is gone. We cannot find a lawyer that is willing to help us get them approved and paid. We've now lost our homes. We're forced to move into other homes. I talked to Mrs. Henderson outside and asked her if she just drove through our mobile home park and saw the mobile home park. She said yes, she just kind of put her head down. She can go home and sleep at night. She's got a place. Now, we're forced to move into homes with this toxic water. And we still have not gotten damage claims. There are still people in that park right now-
Which park?
-that are going to-
I heard the name of the park being somebody asked.
Ambassador East. They're trying to get moved out. They're giving us time to get moved out. But we need to get our damage claims paid so that way we can move forward just like the city needs to move forward. Now, we put on, we've gotten one of your pictures-
Oh, what?
On the second, yeah, on the second part of this issue, we got one of your pictures. It says on there, the pin, after I filled the pitcher with one of the peer filters, I filled the pitcher, had the filter in it. I poured it into a glass and I put it down in there. It was not supposed to light up. It lit up red stating it does not work.
Over there and that?
No.
Over there.
Oh, where you are now?
Yes. So, it's telling me it's very toxic water. I have testings from two universities.
Okay, and I was going to say, did you all get over there at all?
They did not get over here this last Saturday because it was 3:00 in the afternoon and we had further plans after that.
Okay, well, you know what? I don't have an answer for you today right now because yours is very complicated. So, we need to sit down and give me some more information about it.
One month out.
Okay, okay. Okay, I know you'll be coming in.
Ms. Mayor, I'm just wondering if there's any way that we as the citizens here can make some sort of state of emergency for these schools still giving these children this bad water? There ought to be, you know, some sort of mandatory water filtering for these schools. And if we have to do something, we should be able to do something.
And I don't know if you have gone to the school board meeting to address it or not. That might be a place that you want to go. Like I said, all I can do is tell them what is reported. I really don't have any kind of say-so over what they do. But they need to hear this and I can- You probably can. I'm just saying that you probably would want to present it there to them because they need to hear this. You know, the Board of Education needs to hear this information. And it's not that I'm trying to push this off on them, but like I said, because we don't have responsibility for the decisions that they make. And they need to hear from the community just like I'm trying to hear from the community. But it is something, when I sit down with the superintendent, I will certainly share that with him and let him know what we're doing and see if there's something we can be doing together to help move that along.
Good evening. My name is Quincy Murphy. And I've got a point that I want to suggest. Then I also got a question. My first suggestion is some of us supported Dave Walling when he came in office. So, we're trying to work together with you to move the City of Flint forward. I do understand that you want to have some people on your team. Would you please be thoughtful of the people that you bring on your staff to make sure that you don't bring anyone that cannot work well with us because they may feel like we didn't support you so they don't want to work with us?
Well, let me just say something about that. I am going to be thoughtful about who I put on, you know, who's on the team. That's something that I've talked about from the very beginning. And I don't want to make any kind of quick decisions. We're talking about that. And the other thing is just like Pastor said, we're past that now. And it's not who supported who. It's about Flint and us moving forward together. So, so, yes.
Thank you. My question to you is, the judge made a ruling that he wanted the City of Flint to roll back 35% of the water rates for the residents back from 2011. And I did some estimated calculation today. And based on my calculations, residents will at least receive $2,700 for the last five years towards their water rates. If we went back and rolled back to those 2,000, that's approximately about $450-some dollars a month. I was in court, I mean, a year. I was in court today with Archie Hayman. And I've been going to the court, just sitting in and listening to the interpretations of what they say in 35% decrease in the water rate. How are you and your staff and the city administrator is going to address the issue of the residents who feel that their water bills have not rolled back 35%? For example, if $141 was the estimated monthly rate, that should be around $100 to $90-some dollars if you take away 35%. And that really did not happen in a lot of our water rates. How are you going to address that for residents who feel like they have not been credited or they do not see that estimated $2,700 that I'm estimating? That should be a reflection on their water bill. Thank you.
Well, okay, right now, that's still pending litigation. So, I don't have an answer for you, but that is something that we have to sit down and figure out. Is how do we make things happen? Because we know about the rates being raised at that 35%. And so, what we have to do is sit down and see, how do we make, what do we do that's in the best interest of the people and keeping the city afloat? And so, we've got to try to strike some kind of balance because we don't want to go back into, you know, under emergency management. We want to stay, we want to be financially responsible. But we do need to sit down and look at that. So, that hasn't gone away and that's still on, that's not off the radar at all. So, right now, like I said, it's still under litigation, but we are looking at that. And I know you'll keep asking, so it won't go away. And we don't, we don't want it to go away without resolving the issue.
This gentleman was next.
My name is Dariqo Cooper. I just wanted to say congratulations on winning the election. Two, I would like to say that we continue to talk about this water issue. And, you know, it has already been established that the earnings are in excess of $80 million a year. So, why don't we take some of that money, train our own people in the way that they need to be trained to do the job that we need to do here in the city for ourselves?
Make one more question so we can move to the public safety plans.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations on our election.
Thank you.
Because I walk those streets and put out signs and being my little grandson. And when I called him and told him you had won, he said, yes. I know she was going to win because of what I did with the blood. But what I'm, your plate is full, sister. Your plate is full from the last- placeholder we had sitting there as a mayor. Your plate is full, overflowing. But what is, they're talking about the lead level. What about the other fungus and bacteria and everything else that's in the water?
Well, you know what? I'm going to go back to something Ms. Henderson said. And she talked about, and that's what we've been talking about, is doing some things differently. And certain standards that have been in place, we're going above and beyond because we want to make sure we don't have those problems this time around. And so, that's why some things may take us a little bit longer because we're not going by, if this is the standard, we want it a little bit higher. And that's what we're looking at, is doing some things differently. So, when she said that, she was being honest about that. That's what we're doing. We've been having these conversations every Friday. And that's what we're looking to do. That's what we're looking to do. We're trying to get out of this mess. You know, we don't want this to continue. Right, right. So, that's what we're doing this time. We're not going by, if this is the standard. We want to put some things in place, even if they say, well, you don't have to do that. We were saying, yes, we do. Yes, we do. Okay, we're, we're moving, this is the last one. Okay, because we're going to move the, we're going to move to public safety.
Let's do that.
Let's move on.
Let's move on? Okay, we're going to move on to public safety. And actually, some of the things that we're going to be talking about today is we have the funding from Ruth Ma. And that's going to be for the North End Community Crime Strategy. I'm really excited about that. So, that's one of the things that we're going to be covering today for public safety. The other is the Violence Reduction Network. Want to hear about that. And also, the Blue Badge Volunteers. I want people to know about that if anybody's interested in being part of that. And so, I'm really happy that Captain Golden is here tonight. And she's going to share that information with you all. And then, we'll take questions around the area of public safety. So, Captain Golden, if you could come on up here and talk with everybody about those three things. And we'll take questions next.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm not good with microphones. So, if I start going too low or too high, you can yell at me, please. Okay, first thing I wanted to talk to you about, and it was recently announced in the news. The City of Flint has received a Ruth Ma grant in excess of $1 million. It's a three-year grant for a North End Community Crime Strategy. So, I just want to do a little summary of what that grant entails. The area that the grant covers is from the north Carpenter Road down to the southern border of Flushing Road over to Robert T. Longway. And to the west, Clile Road over to Term and Branch Street on the east. So, a very large section of the city encompassing the North End. The goal of the grant is to increase community engagement and trust. And a lot of the grant includes community involvement. And I would like to say I've been to several community meetings and I love that there are so many people here. I've never seen such a great response at a community meeting. Some of the things that will be included in the grant is there, we will open neighborhood service centers in all five wards that are included in the boundaries of the grant. Okay, can you hear me now? Told you I'm not good with microphones. My apologies. Okay, so, we want to open neighborhood service centers in all five wards that encompass the area of the grant. The neighborhood service centers will be opened one every six months of the grant. So, it'll be one at a time in the areas. We would hire NSOs, which are Neighborhood Service Officers. It would be two NSOs for each ward. Neighborhood Service Officers are not police officers. They are civilians that work part-time for us. And they address blight and nuisance and concerns within the neighborhood that can be addressed at that level. They do SEPTED testing, not testing, SEPTED analysis, which is crime prevention through environmental design. Check out, do we need a street light that needs repair in this area? Do bushes need to be trimmed around this business so that people can't hide and wait for a victim? We're also going to hire a crime analysis with this grant. And the crime analysis will determine hotspots for crime that we need to direct patrols to. Also, going to purchase StreetSmart software, which is an intelligence sharing software for the police department to use between our bureaus and squads so that if a detective gets information that this B and E was committed by somebody with a street name of whatever, he can put that information out to the patrol guys in the cars. And when that pops up, the patrol guy can say, hey, I encountered that guy last week. This is where he stays and this is his real name and forward that information right to the detective. We also want to expand our citizens' radio patrol through this grant. And I'll talk a little bit about that when I talk about Blue Badge. Another aspect of the grant is social service actions. And this includes utilizing social service agencies in the area to increase recreational activities for youth, provide shelter for homeless, and connect people who are in need of mental health services. So, that's kind of an overview of the North End Community Crime Strategy Grant. And that begins in January. So, next month, we'll be starting up all of those initiatives. The plan is laid out for these steps in the first three months and these steps in the next three months. And as that goes along, you'll see a more and more community involvement with that grant. Next thing I want to talk about is Violence Reduction Network, which is also called BRN. The City of Flint was added to the Violence Reduction Network, which is a federal program. It was started last year with five cities across the nation. This year, in August, it was announced five more cities are being added and Flint is one of those cities. One of the things that the BRN brings to us is an additional crime analysis person who is going to help us do some social networking analysis. Social networking analysis is a way that you find out, okay, we have a hotspot in this area. Let's not just go and disrupt the entire neighborhood. Who are the people that are driving the crime in that area? Who are the groups that are committing these crimes? And we direct our patrols after those people that are committing the crimes in that area. The BRN also provides training, best practices. And we've already begun with them some data analysis with the Department of Justice through the BRN, where they have done some deep dive into our data to help us with burglaries and arsons. And we've already received input back from them on how to begin addressing this in a better way than how we've been addressing it. And what we've done is we've taken our two arson investigators out of arson investigation and we're leaving the arson investigations to the state police. Those two investigators coming out of arson are now involved in breaking and entering suppression team. And they are working- And they are working expressly out looking for people that are committing burglaries in the neighborhoods. They have hotspot areas that they're designated to, and the data that we get back from the DOJ provides us with burglaries are happening in this area during these days, during these times. So, we're putting those officers in those areas at those times in an effort to curb the BNEs. Uh, next, I'm gonna talk about our Blue Badge program. And there are several different components of Blue Badge. It is all volunteers from the community. And one of the things that we would really like to see more involvement with is the citizens' radio patrol. Uh, this was, uh, also a hot grant that we received a little over a year ago, provided us with funds for magnetic decals for cars, lights for cars, and police radios. And we provide training to the community that wants to patrol their own neighborhoods. We don't want you going out there and getting involved or hands-on with anything, but you, we want you to report back to us what is happening in your neighborhood. Who's best to know, hey, that car doesn't belong here, I've never seen it before, than someone who's from that area. So, you patrol your neighborhood, you have the radio, you see something like that, it doesn't belong, or it just doesn't fit, or it just doesn't seem right to you, you radio back into the base station. Give them the description of the car, the license plate, and they'll take that information down. Now, if it's just something that just doesn't seem right, that we wanna note it, then it gets noted. If it's something that we need to respond to that's happening right away, then the base station calls nine-one-one to get your car out there. Now, the, how this is useful is, say, the next day, we find out that down the street from where you saw this suspicious vehicle, someone's home was burglarized. Well, now, we have that information, it's something to give to the detective to follow up on. So, that's kind of a little oversight of citizens' radio patrol. A lot of neighborhoods that already have community watch groups, we'd like you to contact us. Uh, Lieutenant Boudreau is in charge of the citizens' radio patrol, and we really would like to see more communities and neighborhoods get involved with that. Uh, we also use Blue Badge volunteers at the community service centers that are gonna be opening with the new Ma grant. So, we're gonna need a lot of volunteers to start opening up these centers to help us get those up and running. And I believe that's all you had me down for?
Yeah, but you know what, I do want you to stay up here in case you have, people have questions that you might be able to answer. But one of the things that I do wanna say, because I talked about it a lot while I was out, was we wanted to get the community policing back, and so, this is the start of that. And so, Captain Golden is letting you know, we do need help with volunteers. We need people to be involved, because that's how we're gonna cut down on the crime that's going on in our, in our neighborhoods. We talked about, uh, people are reporting, they know who's done what and nothing happening, and so, now, we're trying to put some things in place to, to decrease that and address that issue. So, please, um, as you see these programs rolling out in the different areas, get, get involved, because we need help. And who knows your area better than you? And so, we need each, you know, people in their areas to get involved and help us with this.
Y'all hang in there, it's gonna get live in a minute.
Hi, I'm George Hensley. Moving out of the third ward, not by choice. Have reported several different issues in regards to arsony, BNEs out there. We even know who's doing it, and to this day, after months of complaining about this individual actually destroying the property that we have had, uh, nothing's been done. And he's not afraid to tell you that it's like everything he does is stolen.
Okay, Ken, are you staying till the end?
If you're staying till the end of the meeting, I'd like to talk to you separately, so we don't announce this information.
That's not a problem.
And I'll get that information, I'll make sure it's followed up on.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh, John, uh, public safety, uh, we've been paying the city for lights in the parking lot out here. We've been paying the city for, uh, lights in the parking lot, which we don't have. We don't have, and we was wondering if we could get some lights out here, so that you could see it's dark out here right now, and it's a perfect opportunity for something bad to happen.
Listen, Ms. Henderson taking that note down now, so we, thanks, Johnny. Y'all had talked about that, and so, we got it down, let's work on it. Plus, if I may, Ms. Weeden, anytime you got lights out, that's that consumer's number. That's eight-hundred-four-seven-seven-five-zero-five-zero. You call, you call consumer, and you can get them on.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, I live here in the north, in this neighborhood, matter of fact. Uh, I'm glad y'all got this, uh, the Blue Badge program, get ready to get started, because living in this neighborhood for thirty, almost thirty-two, thirty-one years plus, drug, crime, break-in, uh, everything, dead bodies, marijuana, cocaine, crack, and drugs I never have seen before in my life. So, and I live in this neighborhood, so I hope you all scan the volunteers real well, 'cause some volunteers coming, it's coming right out of, they live in houses with their parents. You know, the parents not doing anything about it, and other grandparents, some live in adopted homes. So, beware of the volunteers, we do need the volunteers, but it's bad on the North End. Thank you. Bear care, God bless you.
Uh, speaking about the street lights, some years ago, on Fleming Road between Pearson and Pasadena, the city had not cut the grass. A young lady got, two young kids got hit. The only way the police found them that night was they stepped on them. She is in the, is, this was five or six years ago. She's recovering now. A little while back, out on, uh, a little bit out of the city, a young lady got hit. I've made phone calls to the governor's office. The governor's office, 'cause they'll switch me over to the, uh, department that handles power and lights and stuff like that. They gave-